Good evening, and welcome to a public hearing on the 2026 budget. And it is regarding the 2026 budget. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to? Sarah, please come forward.
Good evening. I apologize that I wasn't at the meeting last week, but I did have the opportunity to go back and watch the meeting and hear concerns that you all have in regards to salaries, positions in my department specifically, and making sure that Montgomery County is fiscally responsible with our resources. And I agree with you that we all need to do a better job of being cognizant of what we are spending in these difficult financial times, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to preserve tax dollars when necessary. And even though the Health Department and Social Services have not combined fully at this point, I have still been able to focus and have focused for the past two years on my Director of Finance position and ensuring that my duty to the legislature is set forth in increasing those responsibilities. In 2023, I reduced staff in my department considerably. Our front office alone, I eliminated two full-time positions, which then in turn, as you know, reduces salary and cost and benefits that are being paid out. But in doing that, I had to give those responsibilities to the two remaining clerical staff that I have, as well as to the Director of Finance. The Director of Finance position has undertaken a number of responsibilities in the past two years, such as managing contracts and payments for every single mental health provider in Montgomery County that we do business with. Applying for grants, responsibilities included applying for the $5.2 million in lead poisoning prevention funding that we received, handling applications for all of our opiate settlement funds and the Juul settlement funds, acquiring performance incentive bonuses for our department that help offset the costs of a number of programs that we put into place, and most importantly, if it wasn't for my Director of Finance, the workforce bonuses and grants that not only were given to my department, but were given to the Sheriff's Department, staff, healthcare workers, as well as DSS healthcare workers and essential staff, would not have happened. I think it's also important to point out that in most counties, every county actually, except for Montgomery County, the Public Health and Mental Health Department have two separate fiscal people. While they are called something different in some counties, they are a fiscal manager, a fiscal director, a fiscal accountant. I was able to find two local counties that are very close to us where those positions, each position, is paid somewhere between $69,000 and $105,000 respectively. So you have one person in the public health domain and one person in the mental health domain. Our fiscal director, our Director of Finance in Montgomery County handles all things public health and mental health as one paid position. Previous to that, we were having to contract out those services to the tune of $14,000 to $25,000 a year. Also, the salary that is in this budget is taken out of LGU funding through the Mental Health Department, which if I don't use it, I lose it, it goes back to the state, as well as through the Department of Health, it's reimbursed by New York State, State Eight, Article Six funding. So my ask to you this evening is to reconsider the elimination of the Director of Finance position and not reallocate it to a lower position. The amount of work that this individual does in this title encompasses is two full-time departments anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Good evening, I'd like to call our special meeting to order this evening for approval, potential approval of the 2026 operating budget. And clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Pep.
Present.
Legislator Kelly.
Present.
Legislator Sweet.
Here.
Legislator Allen.
Here.
Legislator Hedwell Jr., Legislator Majewski.
Here.
Legislator Kowalczek.
Here.
Legislator Pollak.
Here.
All right, thank you. All right, the statement of purpose of the meeting is a resolution adopting the 2026 operating budget as amended and for appropriation to conduct Montgomery County government for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, '26, and to adopt the capital plan. I will sponsor this, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Do you need to come on, Sean?
Sean?
All right, just want to make everybody to have a copy of the resolution. There are two titles in the resolution that are clarified. The first one is on Labor Relations Assistant, line 1222. It went from 0 to 25, 713. The increased amount should be 25, 713. It's printed as 27, 513 on this one. And the same thing with the expenses, that should be 27, or 25, 713. The next change is on the office supplies for 1680, that's 4408. It's changed from 52, 400, not 52, 500.
Where's that one, Sean, again?
13, page 13.
Oh, page 13.
1480, 4408.
Okay.
Now the resolution was 52, 5, and it should be 52, 4.
Okay.
And on the revenue for the lead poisoning prevention grant, A1634105, the change from should be 263, 462, not 482. And it's an increase in revenues of 19838, not an increase in expenses. And 19838 should be shifted from the expenses to the revenue.
Does that affect any of our totals, Sean, especially that last move? Okay, yep.
And the last change would be on the senior caseworker, line 528. On the farthest column over for the expenses, there's a transposition, it should be 1,081, not 1801. And if you go to the back of the fiscal impact.
Sean, you have one more for the court-related expenses?
Okay, the court-related expenses, the, it went from 15,000 reduced to zero. The net effect should be a decrease of 15,000, should be corrected. If we go to the financial impact, the total appropriations based on all the changes on this resolution should be 163, 848, 583. The revenues are correct. The tax levy would be 32, 320, 677. There would be 2.21 tax levy increase, and the increase in the levy is 698, 508. That's based on the writing of this resolution.
Okay, do I have a sponsor for that amendment? That's not big. Legislator Majewski, a second? Legislator Sweet, all right. I have further discussion before we vote. I wanted to bring this to your attention. This afternoon, I received an email as well as two other Amsterdam legislators, Amsterdam-based legislators, from the president of New Dimensions. And New Dimensions in healthcare, do we know who that is, correct? Well, if not, I will refresh you. It is a subcorporation of Liberty, it's a subsidiary, and this is from the board president. And the past three years, we gave them 50,000 annually. I believe the first two and perhaps the third, but I know the first two were ARPA, and I think the third one was ARPA too. Somehow, there was an accounting entry made last year where some ARPA was restored and then given to them. So all three times, it was ARPA. And they, the individual indicated to me that they met with Executive Roman earlier in the year, a team of people, gave him a white paper and some data, and, you know, were actually asked to increase the 50 to 100 at that time. Now, you know, in potential support of this request, you know, it's defined as to help offset the growing costs of care and widening gap between expenses and Medicaid reimbursement rates. They're forecasting an over $500,000 deficit ending this year. You know, they serve Liberty's ARC individuals with disabilities, but also they serve 60%. According to this, in fact, approximately 60% are Montgomery County residents of low or moderate income who rely on Medicaid. Last year alone, we served approximately 2,000 Montgomery County residents, and then there's further explanation as to how much the request equates to a per patient basis. And so I think all four of us got that, correct? Maria?
Yep.
And Michelle, we spoke, because we did communicate with each other about this upon receiving it. So, those are the facts. It's not in the budget. I know we cannot give free money or grants out to entities. And counselor, can you expand on that?
Yeah, so unfortunately, no matter how great the cause, under the New York State Constitution, we have a responsibility for taxpayer dollars, where we cannot gift those dollars to private corporations, and there's very strict rules we have to follow about that. We were fortunate to have the ARPA funding, which is federal grant funding, which we could allocate to certain purposes, and the New Dimensions program was one, and as the chairman mentioned, we found a way to do it for three years there. By as far as just as a general gift or grant of county dollars, we cannot, we can't do that under the New York State Constitution.
And I think probably for the past two years of it, I think I may have spoke up a couple of times when it was going on, saying we got to be careful with this because it's going to create a windfall of other people, not-for-profits looking to help make ends meet, you know, coming to us for such requests. And we don't have an open checkbook or pocketbook for this kind of thing. Also, you know, and I don't fully understand the finances of that organization, but keep in mind, they are a subsidiary, easy for me to say, of a much larger company that is, generates some good income, you know. I don't know what their financial statements look like. They may indicate, you know, that's why we're coming to you, because we can't do that from the parent corporation. But at any rate, whatever they can or can't do for themselves, we are not in the business of doing this from a legal standpoint. So Executive Roman, you know, if there's another way perhaps skin this cat as we move forward, you know, now you spoke about a contractual basis.
We can use county funds if there's a contracted service.
Right, that's the same conversation I had with you.
Okay.
We just can't give away money. If you can match services or goods that we need, we can talk, and I actually did connect that party up with DSS, not back, to see if there is some type of service that we are in need of, that they provide, and that would be on the way from exchange money. ARPA, you know, I faced ARPA issues all year long on my tour, but the ARPA bucket is pretty much empty.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're pretty much aware that the wells run dry there, you know.
Yes, so I had the same conversation and said exactly the same thing as well.
I'm sure you did, and thank you for that. I just, but I, you know, I know and respect this person, and I wanted, and the organization, it's a very important organization, the parent corp, the subsidiary, very much respected by all in the county and by ourselves, but if this is capable of happening, it's got to be done on a different structure than simply gifting, it appears.
And I would add that, I'm, my family has been a client of Liberty, so I am very much a fan and aware of what they do and how much work they do for our community as well.
So that's a superior organization, there's no doubt about it, but this is something that we just can't keep doing legally, nor can we afford to financially, you know, I would say at this particular point in time. So is everybody in agreement with that? Yes, we have all nodding heads there? Okay, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to amend this resolution in front of us. Did we get a sponsor in a second on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
On, Legislator Kelly.
Can I add another amendment?
Sure.
Do you want to vote on the pending amendment, and then do a next amendment?
Is that, I mean, if you think that that's the best way to do it, we'll do it better. I mean, if there's one more, I don't know that it's.
As long as I get a chance to add my amendment.
Up to you, usually it's one pending question at a time and then another one, but.
Go ahead.
You know my feelings from the last meeting.
I'm sorry, is there a second on that?
I added that this amendment.
I'll second.
Well, we got to hear what it is first.
Okay.
You know my feelings from the last meeting. My amendment would be proposing striking two from the bottom, five from the bottom of the first page, and one on the top of the second page.
Say them again, Martin.
So from where the numbers first start.
Yep, from the bottom.
Two from the bottom.
The Director of Finance.
Yep.
Yep.
And five from the bottom. And then on the back page, striking the top line.
I would like to ask Chair to have them repeated so that I have them correctly.
Sure.
Which page do you start?
On the first page of the resolution.
Okay.
Five from the bottom, page 22. 270, you see the one that ends in 270 with parentheses?
Business manager?
That's one.
Okay.
The other one is two from the bottom.
I got that.
Director of Finance. And the other one is the top entry on the back page.
So there's three altogether, basically?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're sponsoring that, obviously. Do we have a second?
Okay, so you're doing it separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second, anybody? Okay, Legislator Pollak, discussion?
While I agree that we need to be more mindful of spending and being stewards of the taxpayers, I still believe that fundamentally changing a department during the budget season isn't necessarily the best approach. I, while I won't be here next year, I truly hope that we continue down the path and make it a one-unit Department of Health and Human Services. And this was part of the groundwork to get us to that point, and I would hope that we continue down the path to better utilize the resources of the county and streamline the process of serving the client base that use those departments.
Any other comments? Questions? Okay, well, let's vote on the first amendment that Sean gave us. Let's go around the room. So all, how about this, all in favor of Sean's proposed amendments? Aye. Opposed?
Passed.
Okay, abstentions. Okay, now let's go around the room on the second amendment of Martin's.
Aye.
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 All right, passes. Sean, now we need another amendment.
Hang on.
It just affects the financial impact, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's the one I'm waiting for, on the bottom of the financial impact. It's okay, only these numbers are going to change.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I see these numbers in my sleep. And Sean's there too, very disturbing.
Old music. Elevator music.
Highland.
The duet, Mr. Evans. The duet.
Yep. You get one more show before the second.
Two more months and that's hit, right? You're breaking us up.
Four more.
Here's what's happened since, before you got here. There were some typo errors on these entries, and I'll go down the list with you right now. Page nine, Labor Relations Assistant, you see that one? Yep. It should be 25, 713 in the increased column, not 513. Okay. And 25, 713, obviously in the expense column. All right, on page 14, the second entry on page 14, Office Supplies. Okay. That should be 52,400. Okay. Not 500. Line 20, page 22, Lead Poisoning Prevention Grant, that should be 263, 462, and the 19838 is not an increase or decrease, it moves over to the revenue column. And line, page 29, the second entry for that, Senior Caseworker, the parenthetic 1801 should be 1081. You see it over in the far right-hand, see, it's 1081, but then it, over in the right-hand column, it says 1801. Okay. And Court Related Expenses, page 41, the 15,000 is a decrease. Correct, Sean? I know you're doing other things. Okay. So what that did, Legislator Hedwell, at that moment, was on the financial impact statement, it changed total appropriations to 163, 848, 583. And it changed the tax levy to 32,320, 677. It then in turn changed the tax levy percentage from 273% to 221. And it changed the increase in the levy from 862,170 to 698, 508. Subsequent to that amendment, Legislator Kelly proposed a second amendment to the budget as proposed, which was to take page 22, Business Manager, and strike it. Take Director of Finance, page 22, three lines below it, and strike it, and take the line at the top of the back page on page 27, the 19329, and strike it. We did a poll vote on it, and it got six votes before it got to me. So it passed. And now Sean is in the process of changing the totals for appropriations and tax levy. Are you done?
Yep.
Okay.
Total appropriations would be 163, 868, 929. Revenue did not change. The tax levy would go 32, 341, 023.
Uh huh.
It would be a 2.27 tax levy increase, an increase in levy of 718, 854.
Martin, would you please, for the sake of Legislator Hedwell, recite your, re-recite your rationale behind the sponsorship?
It'll be different. It's off the top of my head. The gist of it is, while I agree that we need to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and I do believe that we need to find savings where we can, I don't believe that fundamentally changing a department at the budget process is the appropriate time. With that being said, I also believe in the plan of merging to Health and Human Services and streamlining the process, and providing a service that our, their clients can better utilize. And the original plan was to have this position. I believe if we're still moving towards that goal line, we need to continue with the plan and make it come to fruition.
That was his explanation, and then we took the vote. So we passed Sean's amendment, we passed Martin's amendment, and now we are looking to pass the resolution as.
Are you amending the financial impact?
Right, there are three amendments.
Huh? Yeah, all right, we got it, all right, sorry. Third amendment.
Sorry.
Third amendment, total appropriations, 163, 868, 929. Total tax levy, 32,341, 023. Tax levy, 2.27%. Increase in levy, 718, 854. I'll sponsor that amendment, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, that is Legislator Majewski.
Yep.
All right, all in favor of the third amendment?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, now finally, all those in favor of the resolution adopting the 2026 operating budget as amended?
Do I have a question first?
Yes.
The resolution that we passed last month for the, for the farmland protection, is that in the budget?
No, it's not. And Sean brought that up to me after the fact. We're going to have to find a way to fund, because it was, the way it was worded was, it made it look like it was going to be paid for by all the rebates, or what is it paid for?
Ag rollbacks.
Except.
Ag rollbacks.
Ag rollbacks. And so the financial impact statement was stated in such a way that made it look like it was going to pay for itself, and then Sean mentioned that to me over the phone a day. And then Shaun mentioned that to me over the phone, uh, a day or so later, and uh.
So that was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yes.
So we're two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in the whole order?
Well, we, we can also amend that resolution and not dedicate two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to it if we have to come up with it. And we don't have it to come up with. I mean, if the, if the original purpose of the program was for it to, to pay for itself and it can anymore, then we can't, we can't do it to the tune of two fifty, legislator Kelly, please explain.
The two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we came up with as a compromise, because the original intent of the law was to fund it with the increase of, of assessment from changing land, from ag land to something else. Whether it's solar, residential, commercial. We were told that we cannot unilaterally pinpoint tax bills and attach it to it. The few parcels that we used in our working group, it was big changes, so we settled on two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Currently, with the six rollbacks that are happening, there's about twenty thousand just on six parcels right now. That is county rollbacks. Because the farm land was deemed farmland, and now it is changed to something other than farmland. That's part of the ag markets law with ag exemption. So, while we can't do what we originally wanted, because we can't say, oh, this SBL needs a penalty, it's gonna go to the ag fund, we came up with that.
But as you described, the intention of it was to fund itself, not to be funded through fund balance, uh, uh, or become a new expense of the counties, correct?
But with the increase in assessment on those parcels, that is what's funding it. And because we cannot individually with those parcels, target them and assess it onto the tax bill, this is what we came up with. The real property person, director was involved, economic development, Shaun was at a few meetings, the executive was there. We've met with three town supervisors in this working group.
So, will there always be two-fifty from the increased property assessments?
Well, the.
To pay for this?
The way that the law is written, it'll be revisited in five years to see, track the trends of ag land coming out of ag and being redeveloped into other. Because ag assessment is a lot lower than.
Commercial. Sure.
So, one of. If, if the trend stops and we're not under the solar threat, and we no longer have solar, which hopefully that happens, then it won't happen. But currently with the solar threat, you know, we all are in agreement that we don't like looking at those things out our window.
Yes, that's true.
We are trying to help the ag community that is not buying into the solar to better utilize their land, to help increase efficiency and be good, good stewards of the land and good neighbors.
All of admirable purposes and causes.
And the county attorney was also on the working group.
So, how do we fix this under the circumstances?
Well, either.
We, we can't be in a position where we all of a sudden create a line item for two-fifty, the fund, to start.
The line item already exists.
Or, or fill it with two-fifty. If in fact it was, it's coming from reassessed properties. Martin, and all of you who've been involved in this, did the sum total of all the reassessments ever equate to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that wouldn't come out of our pockets?
We used a few parcels, I don't know what the.
But, but did it, did it total the amount of money?
It was millions of dollars.
I think it's above the two-fifty, anticipated for an increase in tax revenue.
The original plan was only to put ten, my thought was ten, I believe twenty was thrown out there. You know, you, you want to provide a fund that does this, that has some substance, or you don't.
Can it be adjusted though? Given the economic times, to a different amount? Can, can we resolute it down with an amendment next month or the month after? I mean, how?
I would hope not, because, you know, if we're opening a grant funding, that the board would ask the farmland protection board to look at these applications, rank these applications, and then fund these plans, these grants. Um, you know, I, I, if you lower it, I think that's less outcome that could happen from it.
Can we guarantee it doesn't come out of our fund balance?
If the assessors continue to do the clawbacks and change the tax rule, which currently is being actively done, yep.
But we don't have the control over the individual assessors, they have the control, so.
So, also with that, the reason that we met with the three town supervisors is there was one assessor that was refusing to do it. And we brought them in the room and showed them, we selected similar parcels, one similar parcel in all their areas, and came up with the amount of the clawback. The, you know, they, it was small on one parcel, but the clawback on the lowest one was like three hundred and something, almost four hundred dollars, the highest one was nine hundred dollars on a, on a single parcel that was to be changed.
So if this, if this exists in the budget, excuse my ignorance, where is it? And why didn't any one of the people on team of people who worked on it ever construe it as something that we needed to add expense to our budget for, or is it in there already?
It's not in the budget, the resolution was passed at this meeting, the.
Right, but it, but it existed before, yes.
The fund, the, that line item? Uh, the board of supervisors back in the day used to put money into it, because the plan was to sponsor uh PDR's purchase development rights um, and help the farmer apply for grants through ag markets to become forever ag and preserve the farmland of the county. We had one person apply back when it originally started, the dollar amount that the state deemed was a, a, you know, the dollar amount associated with the development right portion of their land was too low and they decided to walk away, and so that fund sat dormant for a while. And then later on, was no longer funded. And then in the last ten years, we've had two or three farms that have applied and have been awarded. I thought there were three, but only two are coming to mind right now, that have been awarded and that fund is used to help pay for the land conservancy to hold the deeds.
When it was funded long ago, was it?
Fund balance.
Okay. It was taken out as one, in one fell swoop and it's just slowly been whittled down to zero, or you now need to replenish it again, is that it?
The fund is not at zero, but the fund has been being used over the years. Uh, we used some to update the farmland protection uh plan, we've used it to help pay for the paperwork to, for the conservancy to hold these easements. Uh, when we established the position in soil and water for ag economic development, some of it was used, we have been using it. Back then, you know, it was fifty thousand a year, but back then it was, you know, mid nineties that the fund was established, um.
Is there a way to phase this thing, I mean, if, cause it's looking like we have to add two-fifty in expense to our budget right now, yes? You're, you're an accountant.
Yes, yes, and I'm sure there are other resolutions that we pass along the way that have affected this budget that we don't always pick up.
No, I, I know, I know, I know, but it just, it, it, it's almost like it was pack, not intentionally, but it was packaged in such a way where none of us caught it. Except, and that's, I guess where we needed more information about it, as especially during budget season that we're in. You know, from those who are most familiar with it. Um, and it's not just you evidently, you know, there's other people in this room who are familiar with it, much more than the rest of us are. Um, so Shaun, what you got up your sleeve there?
Fund balance, what else you got?
Well, we could, or we, you know, I, the only other spigot is sales tax. Which we probably could do. It's in, you know, what are we at, forty-five? We could go forty-five, two-fifty, right?
We could only go four percent. Cause you gotta.
All right, well then forty, forty-five-five, I don't, you know.
We could go five hundred thousand, that's gonna be the, uh, two-fifty plus two-ten, cause you gotta share two-ten of the five hundred.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I mean, fund balance, you know, we don't wanna touch if we don't have to. We do have per- perhaps a little wiggle room in uh, sales tax, um, hopefully. If you're saying that we're, you know, on target for about forty-seven this year, um. So.
I don't know if there's, if there's possibly a mechanism to reduce the amount of the expenditure as we get clawback, as we get rollbacks. But the, the amount, you, you never, you, you don't know how many, uh, when you're gonna, gonna get the rollbacks in.
So what are you saying? I know what you just said, but what does that mean?
Well, for example, let's say, based on the, the resolution, you're gonna fund a two-fifty this year. For example, next year, if we get forty thousand dollars in rollbacks, the following year, you're only gonna fund two-ten of it. Because this resol- the resolution states you're gonna fund two-fifty for the next five years.
It's a pretty big nut. Two-fifty a year? I mean, is it, is the activity even happening to, to warrant that, two-fifty a year? You're looking up something.
Is the activity happening?
Yeah, I mean, is, is, are the opportunities for these uh, rollbacks, how, how, how often do they occur?
They happen once a year, whenever a parcel is taking up, you know, changed on the tax rule. So, the current twenty-six tax bills that are going out, real property is working on changing those tax rules and, and readjusting how they're supposed to be taxed.
So, the implicit message is, is it's coming out of real estate taxes?
Yes.
How was, how was the one assessor not changing? Isn't that?
Because we have no say, because we are not uh countywide assessments.
It, it's not state law that it is?
It is, but there's, the state didn't put any teeth behind them not doing their job. And so that's why we got the supervisors, because they are all appointed by their board. And when they realize that it's actual dollars that they're missing out on.
Did they give an excuse of why they are not doing?
Uh, it, too much work. So this one assessor said it's too much work for what she's being paid. And they all originally gave that, it's not just one, um, so.
Well Shaun, for this year, let's take it out of s- let's do the sales tax bump. And we can talk about the future. So how does that change this thing for the O P time? Martin?
Yes?
What department is this line in? You know? It's a real problem?
It's a reserve account.
It's gonna have to go under property, soil and waters, on that account number, so there'll be a new line in that one.
That's why you said it existed.
The fund exists.
It, it's a reserve account.
Is that even in here, soil and water?
It's in our budget.
Where is it, Martin?
Soil and water?
Yeah.
Uh, page forty-seven.
Forty-seven? Oh, it's in our budget, okay, I see what you mean, I was looking for a cost center. Hmm. So, the line is?
It wouldn't be the soil and water line, it would be the farmland and protection line, I think.
It would have to, it would, it would have to create the, the new liner. But it, it would fall under account eight, seven, ten, zero, zero. We'd have to create a farmland protection line, like eight, eight-four-five.
Okay.
The next available number.
All right.
Nine, one, nine-two. I believe nine-two would be available.
Do we need to do this now, or can we do it by resolution? I mean, I'm just asking you.
That's, well, it'd have to be a, a resolution to amend budget.
No, but I mean next month.
Hey.
Huh?
Hey, you can do that.
You know, then that way we can just, you know, and he'll still be here and he'll sponsor it and.
But we're not funding it this year.
No, we're not.
Talking twenty-five or twenty-six?
Well, you want it to twenty-five?
If we're making a resolution to put it in next month, it would be the twenty-five budget. And twenty-six amendments don't happen or shouldn't happen.
Well then we'll do it in January, I just wanted you to be here for it, that's all.
Thank you.
That's all I was looking out for.
I'll be here in spirit.
All right, councillor, January.
January.
Yeah. All right, so that way we don't have to change anything we got here. And make a fourth amendment. All right, everybody okay with that? Yes, okay. Thank you for bringing that up, legislator Hadwell. All right, so, um, all in favor of the twenty-twenty-six operating budget as amended, um, three times uh, by three separate amendments? That was sponsored by myself and legislator Sweet, the original um, resolution. All in favor? Are they?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
You're, you're, okay?
Maria. Can have a, okay. Did you vote?
No, aye.
Okay.
As amended, yeah.
It's only passed.
Yep. Any other business anybody would like to discuss? During noon, most of the.
Second.
All right. And during. And, during.